All hail Biafra. This is Biafra Liberation Army Network, coming to you again. Please do subscribe, like, share and comment.
Opening prayer by John Muaneiri. Media, please connect to admin for Florida, because Florida is doing the Kola Nots hosting for this evening. And the admin is Edith EJ Adiwe. Edith, please raise up your hand so that the media team can connect you. I think they are at the site. Edith here, please raise up your hand.
Okay. Yes. Done so.
Hold on, uh, Madison, is that you?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. Edith, please raise your hand again, please. I missed you.
Oh, okay.
No, no, let me get you on the spot, please.
I did.
Okay, you already composed it.
Thank you. John, come over.
Ahambo, John Muaneiri. Oh, nee men, ihe na di go koomu men. Oh, nee men, ihe na di go koomu men. Oh, nee men, ihe di go koomu men. Ihe, ihe koomu men. Ihe na di go koomu men.
Cha, 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 cha. Ibo kwenu. Kwenu, kwenu, kwenu. Where's your nuu? Get it, Nekel.
Um, prayer would be rendered in what most of us know as is English. Um, the reason being that some of our brethren in Biafra do not understand, they don't hear, you know, that's not, that's not the term. They don't understand Igbo, so we render it in English and they interject Igbo when necessary, those who cannot say in English. Okay?
Um, please try as much as possible to say everything in English or broken. Thank you.
Okay, all right, all right. Father, we thank you, Lord, for today, for bringing us here together to be in your presence and make our petitions and chart the way forward to accomplish this task which you have assigned to us. We bless your name, oh God. We ask that you take control of everything we do here today by your spirit so that at the end of it all, you take the glory thereby, in Jesus' name. So we want to start by remembering our past heroes and heroines who've gone before us, who started this course. And I want to mention some names. Uh, prominent is our leader, Chukwemeka Odomiogo Ojugo, who was the first president of the Defont Republic, um, followed by Vice President Philip Effiong, Major General Philip Effiong, who eventually surrendered to the the Zulu government, led by Britain and some of the allied forces. I want to mention also Major General Timoti Owatou, who fought gallantly and disconfited the army of the the enemies. Cornell Achizie, Achizie was known as Honeyback, Eric. He showed the enemy, I mean, the enemy soldiers peppered in the warfront. I want to remember Chukwemeka Nanzo. I want to also remember Kopra Okavu. Okavu, single-handedly neutralized, um, the armored carrier of the enemy, sacrificed his life so that his sport can be spared. And also, in this group, we want to remember in the current times, Ekonsu and the Gentoo, those, the enemy forces have killed. And then our Biafra children who died because of our shocker as a result of economic blockade placed on Biafra during the war. May the souls of all these people rest in the awesome of the Lord until we meet again.
Amen. Amen.
Also, we remember our living legends and heroes. Um, prominent, among them is our indomitable leader Mazinam DiKano, Okukano, uh, the prophet of our time. The prophet God gave to the Biafrans for their deliverance. Habbi, the Bible rightly says, "A prophet is not with his honor except in his own country." Most of us don't know he's a prophet, but that's who he is. I want to say something about this man of God. On the, at the first day of July, which was 2023, the very first day, the two weeks, um, sit at home started, that shook the whole world. I would say, um, for some reason, I met him in a, it was a revelation. I know it's not just a dream, it's a revelation. Um, in that dream or revelation, Mazinam DiKano showed up, very confident, smiling, and he shook my hand, irrespective of what he has passed through um, in the dungeon of the Nigerian government. He was very, very, very energetic. He's saying that he's been a pure white. Um, eventually, the, the, the revelation ended. I was convinced that there, there is nothing will happen that will not get Biafra. So I want to remember him and we share in his travail. The ordeal is passing in the hand of the indomitable Republic of Nigerian government. Also want to bring you into this, uh, to light now our Prime Minister Mazisamun Eba Njoko, who God has prepared to lead us into the promised land like the Joshua of old. We want to say, PM, you are doing well. Be focused and we are behind you. Surely we'll get to that promised land, in Jesus' name. I want to thank the cabinet in prison that are working with you. They've done well. Everybody has done well. The media team led by Sonia Akrawa. I know people come in and go, but, um, some have been consistent. We want to recognize them. Ukotu 47, Adadi Olama, Pastor Van Van Van.
Okay, it's afternoon.
Yeah.
Good evening.
Yeah, Pastor Van Van, we want to recognize you for your efforts, you know, uh, broadcasting twice a day, a day. That is very encouraging to us. One, thank you. Edi Kechechana, wow.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. So we come back to you. What we just have at this moment was an opening prayer. Um, I'm going to say something now. It is very important that we keep to time. Time is of essence. We have a lot of things to do. And if we have to, if you're called upon to perform any task or say something, please keep it very short so that we'll be able to complete and achieve our aim tonight. Thank you very much. The next on the agenda is introduction of state administrators.
Please, Dr. Thomas, why is, uh, Father Anthony is even writing on the comment section that his hand is up? Is that everything he wants to do now? Because he's co-host. Father Anthony, you are co-hosts. I don't know the reason why the hand is up. And he's writing in the comment section that his hand is up.
My hand is up because the camera was blocked there. I pictured, I've opened it up here, but he didn't open it on your side.
This meeting is being recorded.
So what you will do is to go out and come in again because there's nothing we can do. You are already co-hosts. You could easily have been able to own it for your own. So don't go out and come in again and accept all the all the audio and camera, everything. Make sure you accept everything.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Father God, come back, measure.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, we already captured the names of all the state administrators. So what I'm going to do is to call your name for the record. Then when it's time for you to present your state donation, you have the opportunity, you know, to introduce yourself and then go ahead to call the donation that you have. So right now, just for the record, I'm calling, I'm gonna, you know, call the names of all the administrators. For Arizona, we have Lawrence Aba, California, Ada Onowu, Connecticut, Chris Okezwe, Georgia, Maz Phillip Adoké, Florida, Edith Adiwe, Indiana, Miracle, Illinois, Longinus, Louisiana, Daniel, Maryland, Josh, Massachusetts, Victor Ebuna, Minnesota, um, Chukwemeka Okavu, Michigan, Dimma, New Jersey, Oloma, New Mexico, Florence Ezintz, New York, Love Akabundo, North Carolina, Faith, South Carolina, Yusobi, Iowa, Father Anthony, Ohio, Chinwe Ekocha, Oklahoma, Maz Paul, Oregon, Maz Chika, Amukamara, Texas, Chiniere Apu, Washington, DC, Ungazi E, Washington State, Maz Felix Eze, Virginia, Emily Kay, Caribbean Islands, Brazil, Maz Egeke, Guyana, Chukwema Njoko, Grenada, Isaac Ebo, Suriname, Okwi Okavu, Uruguay, Mercy Nsika Abasi. Thank you. Those are the names of all the administrators of the North and South America. Also this evening, we have the presence. We want to welcome and acknowledge our cabinet members and ministers. Welcome, Honoreables. We are happy for your presence here. Thank you. The next in the agenda is presentation and breaking of Kola Nots by Florida. Florida is hosting the Breaking of Kola Nots this evening. So we go back to Florida and I call upon the administrator of Florida State, um, Edith EJ Adiwe. Thank you. Britis. Onto you, but.
Okay, um, Oji Aba, Dubai. I know now, I'm out, I'm out, I'm out, I'm out, I'm out. The boy can't help but move on. I got the lawyer, but I'm on. Uh, our Prime Minister. Chukwemeka, Seki, Jikai, Todekiji. Dubai, I don't know, Oji Aba, I am, I am, said. Chukw, Chukw, yeah, if I know, so. We're going home. Uh, can I sleep now? Forgive me, I'm on a journey, I'm looking for now. Now, I know, I know, I know, I know. Now, Oji Aba, no, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not. Hundred a gemma. Yeah, well, 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 Oji Anua. In addition to that, I'm a teenager, forty a gemma. Maka, uh, the convention bag. So our administrator guy, she has.
Um, please, a point of order, please, a point of direction. We want to be using English or broken. The reason being that the Oji is not being word in Biafra land. There was.
So I'm sorry, let me do this.
That's a new vocabulary.
Did I say? No, no, it's wrong. Okay. Okay, you see me, you use the Indian shit? I think, I think it makes it all, it doesn't matter. What, what, what can I, we are, we are.
Mix it, mix it up, mix it up. We are not in Biafra land. This is, uh, we are in foreign land and we have to do in accordance with, everybody here doesn't understand the Igbo language. And, uh, so we are going to, and also uh, other Biafrans that doesn't understand Igbo, they also word Oji in their places, so we are going to use a broken that is understandable by everybody. It's an exceptional thing that we have to do going forward. Thank you.
Oh, well, okay. And now everybody here will take a correction from one. We're gonna be using English. We're watching. Uh, I, uh, we are presenting this Kola and we're going to break it so that all of us will share it. And then the God, our God has already blessed Kola. And all we have to do is say, call it and share it and get all we have to get from it. In Jesus' name we pray.
Say, say, say.
As I said, the Prime Minister, I would, I would put in a hundred a gemma. We're watching. In addition to that, I'll put a forty a gemma for the convention bag. Our administrator will take care of the rest. And you know, we, okay, okay.
He's a admin for Florida. Let this camera be, put it down a little bit so that you can, we can have a full picture. Yeah.
Is it better?
Look it down more, look it down more. There's too much space up. There's too much space ahead on top. Bring it down. Yeah.
Better?
So you have it better, yeah.
All right, our people, uh, there is a Kola Nots. Everybody has to take their Kola Nots and then we go from there. Okay? So, uh, okay. Yeah, Kola Nots, yeah.
Okay. Um, I welcome the Prime Minister. This is, uh, Jim from Gabi Africa to US, Florida, uh, entertaining you guys with this Oji. Me, dear, hundred a gemma for Oji, hundred a gemma for the convention bag.
No, Oji. Sure.
Okay, um. And Meu Raja.
Come to the camera. You can come to the camera.
We've never seen his face.
Yeah, it's supposed to come to the camera. I see now.
Okay. And Meu Raja with the hundred a gemma. Now see, PM, Ibele, Floric.
There were. So, uh, are you going to, well, I'm going, uh, you get, I know now. Okay, so, uh, our, um, we take, we follow you, take the rest of, Maz stay together, not like Oji. We'll, to welcome the Prime Minister with us.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now over to you, media. Please, if there, uh, there are some hands up there that want to take the Kola Nots to welcome PM. Um, please raise up your hand. Um.
Yeah. Father Anthony, are you, Father Anthony, did you come in with another device? Uh, because your video didn't work. Are you the one on this other Anthony iPhone?
No, my name is Father Anthony. I am admin. The video is not still working. I've gone out and came in.
It's from your device. It's from your device. Maybe your settings have a problem. So I was trying to, I was trying to know if you were the second Anthony. Anyway, it's from your device, so, sorry. Okay, go on, uh, from there.
Okay, we have a hand up from, I think, New York, Bridget, New York. Hand is up. So media, please. Good.
Yeah. All right, good afternoon, Biafrans. Good afternoon, Biafrans. Good afternoon, PM. Um, I think I will be permitted to present all my, both taking the Kola and the welcome money because I'm on a national, um, assignment. So I may not stay long. Honorable Sam D, am I allowed?
You are. Go ahead. Thank you.
Okay. This is New York. Um, our honorable Emi is taking Kola with fifty a gemma. Love is taking Kola with fifty a gemma. Bridget is taking Kola with fifty a gemma. That's one fifty for Kola Nots. Ifany welcomes PM with hundred a gemma. Um, honorable Emi, welcome PM with two fifty, no, two hundred a gemma. Love, welcome PM with one fifty a gemma. Bridget, welcome PM with hundred a gemma. Florence, welcome PM with fifty a gemma. Rosemary, fifty a gemma. Ozama and Adobe, one fifty a gemma. That's, um, eight hundred. So from New York, both the welcome and the Kola Nots is nine hundred and fifty a gemma as of now. If something come in, I probably will come in, but right now, um, I might go out anytime from now to my other assignment for the day. Thank you all.
Great. Thank you, New York. Thank you, admin. Love Akabundo. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, man.
You're welcome. So now let's continue. Um, Paul, Oklahoma, hand is up. That's an admin. Can you please? Admin, can you please catch Paul Oklahoma? His hand is up. Admin, um, media, are you there? Okay. Paul, Oklahoma.
Nongan.
Okay, go ahead. I see your hand is up. I'm letting you talk.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. I welcome everybody by the special grace of God. I welcome PM and all his cabinet. So we are taking two hundred a gemma for the Kola Nots for Oklahoma people. So our, our donation for the PM visit, for my very self, I'm giving two hundred a gemma. Florence, two hundred a gemma. Ancestor blessing, one fifty a gemma, total of seven fifty for all. God bless everyone.
Thank you. Thank you. Just for the record, um, you know, we are doing the Kola Nots. If there's any admin here that is going to work, can you please at this time do your Kola and then your donation before you leave? I'm now calling upon the administrators that will be going to work or that had to work to do so at this moment before we continue. Um, Oloma, New Jersey admin. Are you here? If so, please do your presentation. I know Oloma is going to work. Is she here? Okay, let's continue.
Florida, please unmute yourself. Florida, unmute. Put on, turn your phone on, madam. Turn your phone on, madam. Turn your phone on, madam. Just answer your call and mute, uh.
Hello.
All right, um, Oloma, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, my honorable. Our protocols of Zab, welcome to the United States, His Excellency, our Prime Minister Mazisamun Eba Njoko. My updates for the town hall meeting today are as follows. Happy remain five hundred. Now, I am only way two fifty. Um, if I reach to Sania, one two hundred. Um, Oloma, two hundred. Doctor Chinado Okoye, two hundred. Maz Samuel Loa, four hundred. Maz Osai, Okeke, hundred. Maz Bonifans, Obah, two hundred. Josephine Okoli, hundred. Grace, Unkwaadu, one hundred. Maz Chinado Orissa, fifty. Maz OG Chima, fifty. Anthony Azoka, fifty. Moses OJ, fifty. And, um, Maz, if I reach to Sania, who is taking the Kola Nots for hundred naira, for hundred dollar on behalf of New Jersey. Everything came up with two thousand two hundred and fifty for today's town hall meeting. Thank you, everyone. Are you my mind?
Two thousand two hundred and fifty.
A gemma, yes.
To go to New Jersey, New Jersey.
Thank you.
New Jersey. Anyway, New Jersey, you did some two fouls here. You called Naira. That's a, you also called Dollar. Are you still there? Can you just say one more word? Say a gemma and that takes you up the hood. Can you please do that?
Yes, I said a gemma. I realized my mistake. I said a gemma. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's for New Jersey. Is there anyone else, any administrator here that is going to work or that is at work? Okay, please let me know if you come in. So, um, um, media team, please continue. We have some raised hands. I think they want to take the Kola Nots. Over to you, media.
Thank you. Um, we have, uh, Intaja Opera. Please unmute yourself, Mommy Intaja.
My hand, my hand was up in error. I'm so sorry. Can you lower it?
Okay, lower it.
Uh, uh, I'm, I'm, the way here is not allowing me. I'm so sorry.
No problem. I've done it. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Kalu. Kalu, go ahead. Please, I'm Florida. I'm the one that was calling you. You mute your studio and then pick my call. I'm the one that was calling you. That's why I was calling, telling you. I'll call you back. Put your phone on. Kalu, please go ahead.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Pastor Van Van Van. Um, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yes, uh, thank you, Honorable. Uh, thank you, PM. Uh, welcome me again to Arizona. Uh, anytime you come, we'll be welcoming you. Um, I'll be offline it. I'll be offline a little bit, so that's why I want to do the presentation now, but I'll be listening in. Um, then I'll be back in about thirty minutes or so. So I want to do this now, so I won't be missed. So, uh, for the Kola Nots, Arizona is, uh, we take a Kola Nots with fifty a gemma. And then Arizona has contributed, uh, two thousand, one thousand one hundred and fifty, including Kola Nots. Um, so special mention is Charity Okoro, which is a retired sister here. And, uh, she's been so consistent and very, very supportive in everything we are doing in Biafra. I pray that, uh, the, uh, PM during his devotions, we just pronounce a blessing for her. Blessing for us. Thank you very much. And, uh, I'll be back in a little bit. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Arizona. That's a total of one thousand one hundred and fifty. Thank you, Arizona. Okay. Media, is there any hand up anymore? Uh, we just continue. Okay. We can come back to this, you know, it's an on, as an ongoing basis. Whoever wants to, um, do the Kola Nots for, uh, Honorable PM, His Excellency Mazisamun Ika, please just do so simply by raising up your hand and we will get back to you. So the next item on the agenda is a welcome address.
I'm, I'm, I'm just checking, but it's getting the most XP.
What?
But so far.
Okay. Welcome address by the Deputy Continental Rep of North and South America, Maz Chukwemeka Oravu. Maz Chukwemeka Oravu. Over to you, media, please.
Thank you, Honorable. Thank you, Honorable. Thank you for inviting me here. Um, it's a thankful moment for me with regards to the progress and, you know, the opportunity that Lord, God has given us to free our people. Um, the opening prayer has already been made regarding our past heroes and present heroes. I want to thank everybody for. The donors, our men and women on ground. For the structure that um, our PM has created to rid up Mazi and the cannon. I want to thank him for his lookout and steadfastness for not aligning anything to distract him despite the arrows being shot at, at him by the enemy. Um, I also want to remind our people, there are several ways to contribute to this, it's not late to be part of. What the government needs is your funds. There are different ways on the uh, Biafra official, which is BiafraRepublic.gov.org, BiafraRepublic.gov.org. Over there, you can put in your tax, which is your Biafra liberation tax. Um, we also have the special IOU whereby you loan the government and get back hundred percent when Biafra in homeland is fully established. You also have the new, new dimension mandates website, so now means to um, uh, donate to the government. You also have Biafra shop whereby you purchase many, your, your choice, you know, that has been provided. And more, our team is going to provide more items for people to, our people or supporters to buy. And the profit being made from the website is going to be. Used to fund the government too. I want to thank all of you that has been, um, you know, patronizing us. Then along the line in this presentation, the Biafra Raffle Draw will be, will be officially announced and, and. On how to grab bounty will be presented here. Um. So it's a good, like I said, it's a Thanksgiving to me, Thanksgiving time to me, um, we've been through a lot as a people. Now, even in exile, our people are across the world, are being protected. Take from Macca, from Canada, that was oppressed internationally by the Zou government. Now there are never, nobody wants, nobody dares to touch a Biafran wherever they are in the world. Our governments are shown to be. Through to the award. And we are no longer Ezekiel anymore. No longer as targets, no longer soft targets, both in Biafra and homeland. I want to thank everyone, um, for, uh, for everything they've contributed. And what, whether in journalism, whether in national, everything, your prayers, we thank you all. And we, we pray that, you know, you, you raise the temple. Thank you very much, bless you all.
Thank you, thank you, deputy, thank you, thank you very much. Um, the, we have, next on the item. Um, I'll give this to, to the media team, we need a music interlude. And then before the Honorable Minister of Communication introduces our Prime Minister. Media interlude, then the, uh, the Minister of Communication, Mazza Sunny, uh, Aparawa. Thank you.
From there, I have one music I was sent to, is that music you want me to play?
No, 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 play yours, leave that one, I'm sorry, just leave that one.
Uh, Mr. Vam Vam Vam, you may play, uh, I'm on a probably good guy.
Sorry, that thing, you're supposed to prepare, it would better, you got, you have somewhere, please?
Yeah.
So you can send it to me or you play it from your end if you are able to play, because I don't have it handy. I only prepared the one that farmer is down sent.
Yeah, I'm forwarding the other one to you now. Okay, check, check the media team platform, please, check it now, I just posted it there.
The music, the music that best describes the Prime Minister, the good guy. The man that fought with passion, the man that has made us to be triumphant amongst all our foes. In the contraption we found ourselves, the pride of the Biafran people. His Excellency, the Commander in Chief of the Armed Forces, Prime Minister Mazza Simon Eban Joko. And with one name that they have not been calling him, Chief Simon Epa Joko. I welcome you to the stage as you addresses the Biafran people all the way from America, they were my PM.
Thank you very much, um. Honorable Sunny, the Minister of Communication, the Biafra Republic. Government in exile and the de facto government in the homeland. Hey, am I coming out loud and clear?
Very well, sir.
All right, thank you very much, um, Cabinet members, honorable members. And of course, the uh, the Amer- North American, South American rep, uh, pharmacist Diana. Thank you very much for coordinating this particular town hall all the time. I welcome everyone of you this evening and it has always been very wonderful. To be with you, especially Biafrans in the United States. My fellow Biafran. We have seen the paradigm shift in the course of this event of the liberation of Biafran people. As we continue to see the upsurge. In the Usman Danfodio conquest. The expansionist are at it again. Doing everything to infiltrate our land with the patent Boko Haram. This move. Will be resisted. By the Biafran people and its forces. We have seen on social media several people. Who have condemned, one way or the other, the liberation and the manner and the way we are fighting for our freedom. Today, many of them are on social media shouting, oh, everybody should come and see what is happening in Nemo's stage. Everybody should come and see they are bringing Boko Haram, and I want to let them know today. That there is no hope. In those they are shouting and trying to call their attention. The only hope they have remain the Biafran government, remain the government they have castigated. The only hope they have today to resist the importation of terrorists by Hoopuz Odemah. And his gangs remain the Biafran Liberation Army. The only hope they have remain the Biafran de facto government in the homeland and the Biafran Republic government in exile. Without us, they are doomed, without us, they are gone. And of course, we are not fighting for these few people. We have already secured fifty million vote, fifty good million. The Biafran people has given us their mandate when they have lost hope on Nigeria and they say. The Biafran government led by myself. Honorable Simon Epa, go and fight for us and make sure that our land is safe, secure for our children and women. And that's exactly what the Biafran government is doing today. I have watched many of them shouting on top of their voice, trying to create awareness. And of course, nobody will listen to them. We remain the only hope. That you have. You know this at this point. And if you don't know, you are going to know later. To this end, my fellow Biafrans in the United States. A lot of these some people who are now looking up to the government of Biafra. To come and save them from the hand of the Nigerian terrorist state. I would like to educate Biafrans who are yet to understand the approach we are using. The defense and defensive approach, which a lot of people understand as violent agitation. I wanted to get you today. On some of the historic or some of the history of freedom fighting. And I will encourage all of you to listen and ponder on the speech that I'm making today. The struggle for independence and freedom often evokes a spectrum of tactics. Ranging from peaceful protests to more violent form of agitation depending on the pattern the oppressors choose. Why the peaceful movement can inspire significant changes? History has shown that in certain contexts. Violent agitation has sometimes proven to be more effective in achieving independence. Especially when the oppressors are leading the violence, like we have today. Nigeria leading the violence against Biafran people. Why the oppressed are defending themselves ruthlessly, just like we, the Biafran people have chosen. To defend ourselves ruthlessly against the Nigeria war crime. Against the crime against humanity that Nigeria has been perpetrating against Biafran people decade. As this has become the choice of Nigeria terrorist state. And Biafrans are defending themselves, this I want to explain the dynamics between these two approaches. And I want to give some historic example that could illustrate the complicities involved. My fellow Biafrans in the United States and those privileged to listen to this particular speech today. I want you to understand that Biafrans can never be killed again by Nigeria. In the manner and in the way they have done in the past. Whenever the oppressors resort to violence, like Nigeria have resorted to violent from nineteen forty-five to date. I want you to understand. And I want us to know the efficiency of violence agitation from historic perspective. How many people who faced even lesser than what we are facing today have defended themselves and you violent to get their freedom. Today, I am here in town hall with the Biafrans in the United States. For that reason, I will start from the history of the United States. The efficiency of violent agitation. The American Revolution. Of seventeen seventy-five to seventeen eighty-three. The American colonies sought independence from British rule through a series of escalating conflict. Initially, protests like the Boston Tea Party. Demonstrated the resistance to the British policy, the same British who are trying, even though they claim we have independence under Nigeria. It is never a reality, however, as tensions escalated and conflict became inevitable in America. The Revolutionary War ultimately culminated in independence. Illustrating how violent struggle can serve as a catalyst for self-determination. The willingness to engage in welfare-governed support and unify. and unified separate colonial factions leading to the successful establishment of a new nation that all of you are today. And I am having a town hall meeting with you in the United States. Let us look into the Haitians. The Haitian Revolution seventeen ninety-one to eighteen oh four. The Haitian Revolution is a stark example of how violent resistance can lead to independence. Enslaved Africans, Saint Dominique rose up against their French colonial masters in a brutal and protected conflict. While other colonies were pursuing gradual reform, Haiti revolutionary leaders sought a Toussaint emphasized armed rebellion as the means to achieve freedom. My fellow Biafrans, the successful revolt not only resulted in Haiti becoming, in Haiti becoming the first independent black republic, but also served as an inspiration for other liberation movement across globe. My fellow Biafrans, I want to take you also to Algeria. The Algerian War of Independence from nineteen fifty-four to nineteen sixty-two. In Algeria, the struggle for independence from French colonial rule was marked by extreme violent. The National Liberation Front employed guerrilla warfare and terrorist tactics against French, against French forces. Despite the significant international condemnation and a harsh reprisal, the NF, the NLF violent campaign was instrumental in rallying nationalist sentiment and eventually led to Algeria gaining independence in nineteen sixty-two. The intensity of the conflict highlighted the frustration of colonized people and ultimately prompted a reevaluation of the colonial policies by the French government. When the oppressors resort to violent, they will also be confronted with more violent to have a more proactive and more decisive outcome. The Irish War of Independence from nineteen nineteen to nineteen twenty-one. Following centuries of British rule, the same British, the Irish struggle for independence saw both peaceful and violent tactics. While figures like Daniel O'Connell advocated for no means or no violence means, the Irish Republican Army employed armed rebellion as a primary strategy. The conflict escalated with ambushes and retaliatory violence, ultimately leading to the Anglo-Irish Treaty and the establishment of the free, of the Irish Free State in nineteen twenty-two. The combination of violent and political pressure was crucial in achieving a concession from the British government. At this juncture, ask those idiots who call themselves Biafran agitators, why are they interfering in the self-defense that they could not provide for Biafran people for decade they are carrying flag all over the world? My fellow Biafrans in the United States, why these few examples I just gave to you today illustrate the effectiveness of violent agitation? It is also very essential to consider the context in which these struggles occurred. Factors such as colonial oppression. Today, we have what I called the Fulani apartheid regime in Nigeria, where the expansionists continue to follow the legacy of the Usman Danfodio. And I have promised them, I have come here to end the legacy of Usman Danfodio. And the end of the legacy of Usman Danfodio will start from December second. These factors such as colonial oppression, social injustice and lack of responsive governance often participated the turn to violent. In many cases, peaceful protests had been met with repression, living group with few alternative. That particular one, the Afra has witnessed for decade. Today, the Afra government, we are doing the talking. We are not only talking about doing it. The relationship between violent agitation and independence is complex sometimes and multi-faced. And that's exactly why we adopted what I call the multi-dimensional approach. Anywhere you come, we are there. If you come with peace, we give peace to you. If you come with violence, we give violence to you. If you come with diplomacy, we give diplomacy to you. If you come with political, political approach, we give political approach to you. If you say it is a political solution, we give political solution to you. Why peaceful protests have historically played a significant role in social movement? The Afra has moved on from peaceful to a defensive with arms. Instances of violent resistance have sometimes proven more effective in achieving tangible outcomes. The example of the American Revolution, Haitian Revolution, Algerian War of Independence and the Irish War of Independence, which and very soon Biafra will join among the history that has been made using a very strong armed resistance against a terrorist state like Nigeria. I want you to understand that peaceful effort are stifled when a terrorist is in charge of government or when the authoritarian motive of the government is against the will of the people. Then the peaceful effort will always be stifled. The drive for freedom can lead group to resort to armed struggle. Ours will never ever be different. Ultimately, the choice of tactics is shaped by the myriad factors and each movement must navigate its own path towards self-determination. Today, as a government of Biafra, I am telling you, Biafran people, that we as a government, we are navigating our path toward our freedom and self-determination. Those Nigeria injured destructors should understand that our arms are getting stronger every day and we are getting more sophisticated. We will never drop this arm until the flag of Biafra is hoisted without any body interfering. And until the recognition of Biafran as an independent state, the arms will continue to get more sophisticated. Thank you very much. Your support is needed as always and get ready to have, to be part of the history in Finland. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ah, my God! To where, Mia? To where? To where? To where? Ah, my God!
Adam, they're gonna dig it in. There we go.
Who's that, Billy?
There we go.
Oh, come on!
There we go.
Oh, come on!
There, today the killers of Biafran people.
He's in a bad idea! Look at him, Mo!
There we go.
Today, the killers of Biafran people are running away from Nigeria. They are relocating to United Kingdom. Though the one who perpetrated the, the death of over three million children today ran to United Kingdom. They're calling him Gowan. You know, we raised prayer warriors to make sure that he stay alive till second of December. And with the move to United Kingdom, God is answering that question because he's never gonna die there. Even if he's dying, they are going to inject him to stay alive till second of December. That is the essence of going there because if you stay in Nigeria, once there is a blood pressure in five without any. So in United Kingdom, they will inject him and he will wake up till second of December.
I'm a girl, I go, I'm a girl, I go, I'm a girl!
There we go.
Thank you, PM.
Yeah, okay. Um, um, I'll call on, I now call on, um, Honorable Minister of Finance, Mazie. Okay. So please, give us a briefs. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Honorable Diane. Uh, first and foremost, greeting to our leader Mazie Namdi Kana and his SLIC, Prime Minister of the Biafran Government in the person of Mazie Simon Epa. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for all you're doing and the time that you dedicate to serve your people, Biafran, and to liberate us. Biafrans, we appreciate you. Biafrans all over the world say thank you and especially Biafrans in the United States of America, really appreciate your coming every three, two, three weeks. We really appreciate you. And my fellow Biafran, that come to the reason why we should support our Prime Minister, the one who have the template, the one who know how to lead his people, the one who know what it takes to bring the zoo Nigeria to Haneo. He need our support so he will be strong to be able to carry on and fulfill this duty that he have been called upon. This duty that our creator Chukuki Kabia may have called him. And he be know then to be the one to rescue our, uh, we Biafrans. Please, fellow Biafrans, we need money to be able to move on, to be able to fulfill everything. And as we all know that money play vital role in whatever we do here on earth. Without money, we can live a good life. Without money, we can sustain a good living. Without money, we can have good education. That's why in any vibrant economy, country, you will find out that economy is the hub what make that country excel. Most government, the first thing they do is to create job, job, job.